Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board meeting for August 3rd, 2023 at 6:00 P. M. All stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of the Constitution, 225th Amendment, 231st Amendment, 111st Amendment, where it states, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Alright, uh, everybody get a chance to read their minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of July, the meeting of July 20th, 2023 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Three, nothing. Alright, first off, we're gonna open up the public hearing for Mark Boise, 799 Route 109, map 241, lot 006, application for a subdivision amendment.
Steve.
Steve, you come up to the podium and just describe what you're doing.
Yeah, my name is Steve Harding. I work for Sibago Technics, and Mark Boise has a 40-acre lot on Route 109. He'd like to separate it into two lots, about 20 acres apiece, and it's pretty simple. It's no development proposed for the new lot at this time. And I understand from talking to Jason that there weren't any issues that came up during the planning board's site walk, and would answer any questions you folks might have or the public may have.
I'll open it up to public comment. Public wanna ask a question, or? Nope. Alright, I'll close the public hearing for Mark Boise. Do we guys have any questions for Steve?
No, it's a pretty simple lot line division. The potential buyer or the lined-up buyer will be coming in front of us with a complete site plan and everything in the very near future. So we have them.
Yeah. I think it's pretty straightforward. Splitting of the lot. There's a subdivision right there. Well, we have the waiver requests. Maybe we should address those before we, you know, just vote on those before we vote on the project.
The waiver request was for the erosion and sedimentation control plan, I believe, stormwater management plan, phosphorus impact analysis and control plan, and the long-term maintenance plan for all phosphorus control measures.
I'm not sure that we actually need a waiver if those items aren't applicable. There's no new development proposed for either lot after that, so I would, I won't say argue, but I would contain that, I would maintain that those are not applicable to the application, so you don't really need to do a waiver of them.
I was looking at page 17 in the
Yeah.
subdivision regulations, required submissions for which a waiver may be granted.
Mm-hmm, and yeah. He was just stating that they weren't applicable in his notes on his thing.
Right, which is largely why we would grant a waiver. I just wanna make sure that we do it as we're supposed to, because it is a subdivision.
Well, there was an existing subdivision, right? So there, there
All the
Not again.
And so was there a waiver for the initial one?
I think everything was actually, all the studies were done in the last one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, this is a pretty large substantial packet that goes with it all. And the new applicant will be responsible for providing that stuff with his development, too.
So the first time around, those plans were submitted?
I shouldn't be speaking, because I don't have the full answer to that one, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're not really talking about the previous one.
Oh, but if they were submitted, and all we're doing is
It's just a lot line adjustment at this point, because the owner is purchasing the property.
Yeah, I mean, we got all the, we got the information, but I can't remember what, you know, what kind of waiver request we granted on the initial subdivision.
Waivers were, so what? So these were on the plan. He's asking for waivers for
High-intensity soil
The ones I just read out loud a second ago.
Yeah, hydrologic geologic assessment, stormwater management plan, phosphorus impact analysis. And that the perimeter monuments were set in five inches, five-eighth inch rods, whereas the usually, you know, we give them a waiver so they don't have to use a concrete monument.
And there were test pits on that property.
Yeah.
That we actually walked up on.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, as long as we're happy with the rods instead of the concrete monuments. At least we found at least three or four test pits.
Kind of Ben says the same thing in his letter, right?
Did you read Ben's over there?
Yeah, already.
Right.
Yeah, I actually do see now that there were those waiver requests on the plan, so I'll take back my statement.
Well, make a motion what you wanna waive. Yeah, I guess, um We can move along. It's all six of them, I guess. I have six requests.
Will you just state them for the motion, so that we can document it?
Sure, I can read off the six requests they have. It's the high-intensity soil survey, the hydrogeologic assessment, the phosphorus management, the stormwater management plan, the phosphorus impact analysis, the perimeter monuments on the subdivision were set in 2004 as five-inch, five-eighths inch iron rods, and no test pits required. For the six they have listed, so I'll second the motion to grant those waiver requests.
Making the motion.
Well, John made the motion.
No, he said I suggested you
Oh, alright, alright, very good.
But if that's the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
I just write them all off. Alright, muddled through that one. Yeah, yeah, no brush, right? Just looking through the mandatory submissions for the final plan application, just to see if there's anything in there. Is there a note about the buffer with the road? I mean, where the building envelope is laid out, so to speak, the pink line kinda indicates a buffer, but I don't know if there's any actual
Steve, do you know if this plan's changed from the original one, and that you're just doing the lot line adjustment with 2A and 2B?
My understanding is we just added the lot line adjustment for 2A and 2B, and the pink line is the building setback based on the required setbacks.
Right, I just remember this law, we asked them to keep the buffer vegetated, and I didn't know. I was wondering if there was any verbiage about that. Trying to find it.
You can read that.
Yeah. It's a good thing to get down in this stage of the plan, because when we get to the next applicant, they may have already gone in and timber harvested the whole parcel before we even talk about it.
Right.
Is there a buffer requirement? Of 109?
It just has a side and rear lot buffer, 25-foot vegetated buffer on the side and rear.
Well, we're in the commercial A, correct?
Yep.
Commercial A district. Minimum front setback 125 feet from center line of right-of-way. And then there was one about There was one in the subdivision regs that said something about maintaining as a wooded buffer.
Does that pertain to every district or every subdivision?
Yeah, it's like every subdivision. We did it with Joe Stanley a couple times.
If you look under note nine on the plan
That's what I was just reading off a second ago.
It's under the maximum lot coverage. It says 30%, except 50% is allowed within 100 feet of the side and rear setback. That includes a 25-foot vegetated buffer. That's the side and rear that you mentioned, Jason?
Mm-hmm, 25 feet.
Again, that, when the actual site plan comes in, that's the opportunity you folks would have to enforce those types of restrictions.
You're looking for the road? Yeah, there's just a, all subdivisions require a wooded buffer from the road. I'm just trying to find the depth that they indicate in the subdivision regulations. Because it's not the full 125 feet.
I think in previous ones that we've done, it was 50 feet, when you guys went through a full process of the, like, those couple ones.
Yeah, that's kinda what I was
I haven't seen it in this. I think it was, I don't know if it was a good faith suggestion or request.
I remember doing that on a lot of subdivisions. I think it's, I just wish I could. Well, would you be willing to put in a note that 50-foot wooded buffer with the road will be, a minimum 50-foot wooded buffer will be maintained with 109?
If you could point to a requirement, I think I would, but
Chris, you can also do this when the applicant, the next applicant comes in for this lot, too, right?
Yeah.
Right, well, this is where, this is why I brought it up with Chris, is that a lot of times, once it changes hands, the new applicant, the first thing they do is log the whole thing out, so then we go to put the buffer back is harder than securing the buffer now before it changes hands. It's happened a couple times. I know it's in here. I'm pretty sure, we did it several times, so it's almost like, I just wish I knew where.
So I guess my question would be, if this is, if this is commercial A, and I know it's a subdivision, but this is commercial, and this is just a roundabout question, if somebody wanted to put in a store, you would have them have a bunch of trees, they wouldn't allow road frontage store? You would make them keep a vegetated buffer in front of their store, and then come into a driveway?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, to keep the rural character of the town, it's kinda why, why we do that kinda thing.
Oh, just
So it looks nice when you're driving by. It does, it does change visibility of the store, but they put their sign out there. I mean, they'd have to be back, minimum front setbacks 125 feet from the center line of right-of-way, so.
In the zoning, it doesn't give you a minimum vegetated buffer for the front. It only gives you a minimum for the side and for the rear in our zoning. And it's, and it's listed on the plan of what depicts our zoning ordinance.
Right. I've got some minimums for the, in the Good Neighbor policy. There's a bare minimum. I'm on page 65 in the zoning ordinance. And I'm looking at 5.11, 5.12 landscape roadside buffers. Whenever the area between the street and the front of the building is used for parking or vehicle movement, vegetated buffer strip must be established along the edge of the road right-of-way. Buffer strip must soften the appearance of the site from the road and create defined points of access and egress from the site. The width of the buffer strip must increase with the setback of the building as follows. Then it gives this little chart here, if you're within 50 feet.
So building setback's 125 feet for that zoning, so your buffer's at 25 feet.
Yeah, that's what the chart says. So I wanna get it, I guess we'll go with that, since I can't find another number, 25-foot vegetated buffer along 109.
Do you folks make that a condition of your approval?
I would think so.
Ideally, love to leave here tonight with a signed plan or an approval.
It's true, but you didn't have a representative here after the site walk, so we couldn't discuss it at the last meeting, so
It wasn't
We have to take our time. I don't know when we could have discussed it to come to this point.
I was under the impression that from the site visit, there wasn't any issues that were identified, so
I don't think there were from the site visit.
Yeah, there wasn't. We actually told him that not to come into the meeting, because we'd wait for the next meeting.
Right, well, we just didn't discuss it at the previous meeting, because we couldn't.
Yeah, we figured we'd discuss it all after the public hearing, that's why we didn't have to come the last meeting.
Is that your only condition that you're putting on this?
I would think so. It's a pretty straightforward
Can you, if you make a motion to approve it with the condition, he can redo the chart, redo the plan, and submit it to us and sign it?
Yeah.
And then they don't have to, you know, they can just drop it off for the next meeting and come and go?
I think so, sure, I would think so. We could do that.
So would you vote on it, and that would be the condition, and then we would
You'll just redo the, redo the site plan, and then we'll just sign off on it. We're gonna approve it tonight with the conditions, and then you give us a new site plan with that condition, a new note on there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a requirement, and it sounds like it is, I don't think the new app, the new owner, whoever that is, would have any option to get around that, and if they, if they figure out a way, they could come and debate it with you folks when they did the site plan.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't really affect them too much, I just
I don't think it would either. But I don't know what they have planned, and I don't wanna do something that's gonna mess them up, and, you know, but if it's a, if it's a requirement, and you folks are, you know, on track with that, you know, if they, like I said, if they have an issue with it, they could come debate it with you.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
And then to your point, if they decide to cut the lot, at least you've got the 25-foot reserved.
That's kinda what I was driving at, yeah.
So if you can approve it tonight, and do the, do the revision, and drop that off to Jason, and have you folks sign off on it, and if we get it recorded, that would be great.
You see anything else that we're looking at?
I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm just looking it over. I'll make a motion that we approve the application for subdivision of Mark Boise, 799 Route 109, map 241, lot 006, with the condition that a 25-foot wooded buffer be maintained with 109.
Would you like that to be added to note nine, or would you like it to be a new note? 25 is really
I'd like to say we could put it anywhere, but
Yeah, I mean, I think if you They could be, if you just put it right, if you would put it on note nine, just, because it already has a 25-foot buffer
Yeah.
Side and rear, and then you just include a front
Front buffer?
Just add it to note nine.
Yeah, I could say, we could say side, front, and rear setbacks that include 25-foot vegetated buffer. That'd be simple enough to do.
Yeah, because it would be nice to
It would be good to have it in one place.
Yeah, if you move it anywhere else, it'll get lost in translation.
And honestly, I don't know where else we would squeeze a note.
So you're willing to have this the side and rears be vegetated buffers as well? Like, we could put that on there that those would also be disturbed?
If you look at note nine, where maximum lot coverages right at the bottom of note nine, that it says side and rear setbacks that include a 25 foot vegetated buffer. I would just amend that note to say side, front and rear setbacks that includes a 25 foot buffer.
No, I'm looking at it right here, right?
I would just.
Yeah. It's under maximum lot coverage, which should be more under buffers, but.
I'd kind of like to put it in one spot so that somebody can't say, oh, I looked there and I just thought it was side and rear. Setbacks required the buffer. But if there's a better solution, certainly can do that too.
I think that works. Second motion.
All in favor? All opposed?
So amend that note and then just get me two unfolded copies like we just brought in today. We'll sign them at the next meeting in March. Tell them what he has to do after that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Old business, Matt Leck, Nathan Road, will table that for lack of attendance reasons.
To what meeting? It is the third, so it'll be the 17th?
Yeah. New business, Roland Cody, Garvin Road, map 224. Lot 010, sketch plan for application of minor subdivision.
Good evening. I'm here representing the Kingston family on the sale of 26 Garvin Road. Lot 10 comes into play here because the Kingston's purchased this property of lot 10 from the Hurd family in 2021. And they are combining the lot 10, most of lot 10, with the farmland on lot 13. And because the Hurd family sold a 30 acre parcel to the Briants in 2020, we want to make sure we're not violating any subdivision rules. So they're gonna, they've already sold the remainder of lot 10 when they took approximately 65 acres from. No, was it 54 acres?
The entire tract is 70 acres.
Yeah, okay.
And sold the five acres off.
Right. So they're selling off five acres, the remainder of lot 10 and combining lot 10 and 13 together. Yep.
There is a site plan in the back of this packet, I believe.
I got a I got a bigger site plan if it's more appropriate. It's not an eye chart as much.
Thank you.
So basically, we're applying for minor subdivision just to make sure everything is covered. Because it is going to be combined, lot 10 is combined with the farm. And they're selling off the remainder of lot 10 as a five acre parcel just to the left of lot 11.
This is being sold off this section right here.
Yeah, on that plan, you'll see.
So it created a division within five years is what's.
Yeah, that's that's the whole reason why we're here. So it's pretty much, it's pretty much raw land division. So no building permits are requested at this time. I'm sure the people who are taking the remainder of lot 10, that five acre parcel, probably someday want to build on it. To date, nothing.
And they're here, so they're here for finding out what the board wants from them to how to move forward with this.
Yeah.
How in detail, how much information you need from them just before they start jumping into it all.
Looks like they're in the rural district and is there any resource protection on the property?
No.
Is that that checklist?
There is wetland.
Some wetland would not be.
But that's not within the division. That division's right up here. So what?
That's town RP right there.
Yeah, just because of the stream in it, it's a wetland in the back.
It kind of looks like the new property line skirts right along the edge of the brown, so to speak.
Give me a second. That's less than. 685, yep.
I think we would need a map that showed the different zoning districts on it.
Okay. That's kind of what you're doing there, Gavin.
Right, yeah, it's similar to that, but.
I just took the measurements off the map that they're doing and obviously it's a tax map, but it's shows it should stay out of your.
Right, but I think I'm pretty sure we want to get the zoning districts on the map.
Yeah.
Different overlays, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The building setback in the rural is that 75?
75 from the center of the street, 25 from side and rear lot lines. I don't know why that red line is still there.
There's no proposed building here, right?
No.
No, but I just, kind of the same thing we just went through, I was gonna just try to determine the width of the buffer. Just going off of the the district and and the district kind of tells us about how far the bill, how close the building could be. So it looks like building setback is going to be 50 to 74 feet from the edge of the road. So we'd want a 15 foot buffer. Is that what it looks like to you, Jason? Just so I, you know, get get that on the plan.
What pages I on Gavin?
I'm on page 65 in the zoning ordinance. And it's rural, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Would that be, would that be applicable to the next person that when they came in to get a permit that they had to.
Well, they have, so for a building, so a dwelling, structure of any sort, garage, you have to be 75 feet from the center of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
What he's trying to put on is a is a separate vegetated buffer where they would have to keep vegetation of natural growth, at least a 15 foot buffer from the from the side of the road.
Okay.
Into their property.
That would that would be when building permit application process was approved, that approval process?
It would be part of this approval process now.
This approval process, okay.
Yeah. Write that note down for me.
Would you be willing to do the 25 feet like we've done with the other, like Joe Stan, that's what we did with his subdivisions, I think? It was 50 or 25, but.
Sure.
Okay, 25 feet. Yeah. So get that on there so we don't, don't pull a fast one on there. And we'll schedule a site walk?
Yeah, we need to do that. Do we, what do we need flagged?
It's all wooded area right now with I think a path going to the back field, right?
Yeah, it's very wet out there right now.
The 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 plan that you're looking at in front of you shows a right away. That's pretty much an already cut path through the property. You're not going to see much other than that. And a bunch of trees.
So and it's a maybe a squirrel. Garden roads, a town road, so we're gonna have, do we have the road commissioner look at the road at the driveway entrance or?
That's for when a building.
That's next time.
That's the building permit process or when they do a driveway cut. I have the road commission, they come in for driveway and entrance permit and I have the road commissioner review the property and let them know if they need, what size culprit they need.
Okay. All right, yeah, so I would think do the site walk before the next, five o'clock before the next meeting?
Yeah, 17.
August 17th, 5 p.m.?
Yes. Even minor subdivisions require sprinklers. I don't know if you want to have, if you're gonna start listing conditions or not, but.
Right. Right, that is something we should get on this this plan so the new owners are aware right away. Simple area. So it's pretty, it's not very far down Garvin Road. It'll be easy to get there.
Oh, very easy, yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
Go past the old school house and there's another house and then it's.
You pass you pass Windswept Farm and it's probably a tenth of a mile down the road on the right. And obviously, this property is tied to the Windswept Farm now, so. You could actually use the driveway of Windswept if you wanted to roam in there somewhere, but.
And that property is for sale too, isn't it?
That's why I'm here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do the site walk, take it from there, I guess. No, but we we should probably have the detail on the plan that we had that we typically get. Right, in terms of topographical information.
I think you have that already. Just the plan we submitted tonight, didn't have it.
Yeah, if you come up to the podium.
My name is Chris Wolber. I'm a surveyor. So really, we're looking at a 70 acre piece. You know, for us to go out there and do a complete topographical survey is fairly burdensome. You know, certainly be glad to draft some of the LiDAR data that are from the state website or something like that and put it on there. You know, that would be helpful to give you a general lay of the land that's there. Honestly, as as I looked at this, I looked at this as not so much a subdivision, but more a lot line adjustment. Today, we have two lots. At the end of the day, you're gonna have two lots. It's moving a lot line, sorry. You know, some of these things, you know, I was just kind of curious how this process was gonna go and how much detail you need on on the land. Simple things like grabbing grabbing some tow ball off on the and I think the LiDAR data is even better than what's shown there on the USGS, Jason, so. But I will say it's pretty steep once you get up there.
Right. Well, it seems like we're mostly interested in the new lot on the Garvin Road.
The five acre lot?
Yeah. Is that, I mean, that's kind of what triggered this process, right, was that they're dividing that lot off? I would think we only have to look at that lot. I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the only piece they're breaking off or just adjusting the line.
Yeah, adjusting the line, yeah. It's a good hike up there.
It's a good hike up there. Might not make it back for your meeting.
I just broke the second chair of the night, I'm not hiking that far.
Chris doesn't wear anything but Crocs, so we kinda messed on that one.
Yeah, we just looked at that one, what the lot line adjustment would be, doesn't make sense to keep tramps into it.
Yeah, I mean...
It's a division of land, so, I mean, we don't, I don't think we usually look at the whole parcel when they're just breaking off one part of it, I think that'll be fine.
Right.
The subdivision regs is under here.
Yeah.
Says we need the plan to be drawn to scale no more than hundred feet to the inch.
Yeah, and it's a hundred.
Cool, it's good, yeah. See what else.
I think we'd probably be looking at the same waiver requests that I heard the gentleman from Sebago asking regarding the, uh, size of the monuments.
Right, right.
So, we've used a five-eighths three-bar with, uh, with caps on, on that particular lot.
Yeah, it's already been...
It's already been monumented, yes.
We'll just, I guess, put a note on, have waiver request on there.
Right.
Usually in subdivisions, you're dealing with test, not test, but, um...
All those other waiver requests, yeah. Should we get them all on there?
Septic. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause at the, this is, at the end of the day, it's a build a lot that'll take everything, it'll be fine, it's just making this lot line adjustment.
Yeah. So do the same six waivers we did before?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Put them on them, yeah. I guess, so, yeah, I mean, they need to, the building needs to have sprinklers when it goes out.
Oh, yeah, that's a conditions to our subdivision, subdivision regulations anyway.
You know, we should just take some time with these subdivision regs too, it seems like, I just don't look at it often enough.
Right, exactly. Well, and there's subdivisions, and then there's subdivisions.
I know, I know, that's the thing.
Like these last two.
There's a good list on, for the preliminary plan, on page fifteen, sixteen...
Yep.
And seventeen.
You're looking at, like, the...
Subdivision regulations.
Well, I know, I had given him something else, but...
Yeah, that includes, like, we're talking about the zoning, designating the zoning districts and the boundaries.
Yeah, dude, we just wanna make sure that, uh, get the wetlands on the map so that we can make sure that, well, I guess, just get them on the map. Those wetland areas shall be delineated on the survey regardless of size, number ten. Says the location of all river streams and brooks within or adjacent to the proposed subdivision, if any portion of the proposed subdivision is located in the direct watershed of a great pond, the applicant shall indicate which great pond. And we're on Garvin, so we're...
You're way, it's away from Wilson's, Wilson's a good...
Right there.
Good mile away.
Well, still within the watershed, I'm pretty sure, you know? If they were on the other side of the hill, they'd be going more toward square.
Yeah, I think it'd be hard pressed to get it over the square pond, I think Wilson's...
Yeah, I think it's Wilson, but, anyway, um... Zoning district in which the proposed subdivision's located, and location of any zoning boundaries affecting the subdivision.
I'll send you, uh, via email, I'll send you all the stuff that he's kinda opening up.
Okay, perfect.
In the morning.
Okay, so, site walk on the fifteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I'm sorry, five P M. And after that is, is your normal process to have a, uh...
Public hearing, yeah.
Okay, and...
You wanna schedule it tonight, just to...
We can do that, just to...
Simplify it for you, too?
Well, put it, so, yeah, it'd be the, so that's, seventeenth'd be the first Thursday of September.
Should be seventh.
Yeah, September seventh, um... In which we'll notify the butters of the public hearing. Within a five-hundred-foot radius.
Five hundred feet?
Five hundred feet, yeah. We'll send out the, we'll send out the notices.
So you're just doing it right off the G I S?
Yeah, I'll take it right off the G I S and, and we'll, we'll send them out and notify them within a good time and manner, you know, do it, we'll start sending them out here.
Okay.
Next week.
Yeah, we're gonna have them come in after the site walk.
Yeah, just so we didn't...
If something pops up, we can discuss it then and get it ready, that way it's ready for the public hearing and whatnot.
All right.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Burning your money on this one, man.
I know. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
There's, um...
All right, next up is, is it Sean or...
Sean.
Sean. Longley, one, one-three-four-two, West Shore Drive, map, one-twenty-one, lot zero-two-two, greatest application or greatest practical extent. How you doing?
So, um, before you guys jump into this, this was an approved, um, this was an approved greatest practical extent in twenty-twenty, June of twenty-twenty, the old packet's in there. He didn't pull the trigger on his building permit, he came into it for just recently, which puts it back in, cause he, eighteen months, according to our ordinance, so, his packet's the same, um, I, I showed him both of you there, uh, so, and I have all the supporting documents that went with it, um, but, just letting you know that this was already an approved one, and he just ran out of time, uh, he didn't know what he wanted to build at the time, uh, and he just narrowed it down, but, I had to force him to come back to you guys, um, because he, because of the time restraint. Sorry, just, Sean, go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's all right, now, you've kinda said it all, I mean, just looking to get it re-approved, and I have made some adjustments with pulling things closer to the road in a couple areas, and...
Uh, there's an approved septic system right behind him, outside the shoreline zone in his, like, a parking area, too. This is a teardown of the main structure, reused the existing foundation.
Well, can you describe, you just said you made some adjustments, what are the adjustments?
Well, I'm using the existing foundation, and on the right-hand side, um, it was well over the hundred-foot setback line, so I adjusted it back, so I'll be on the right-hand side, I mean, I'll be up behind that line, or right on the line.
Oh, this one? Which one?
Right, right-hand side, this, this side, bring it back to, straight back more, that line right there. So I'm gonna be using that part of the foundation there, um, whereas before, it would've been straight with the main camp, cause there's an existing foundation underneath all of that, so I pulled, any new foundation work will be behind that hundred-foot line.
I thought I heard you're gonna use the existing foundation, but...
Yes.
And then you just said new foundation work.
Well, I'm gonna be reworking in the front of it towards the, towards the road, to square everything off.
To move it back, to move the...
Oh, cause you're doing this right here?
To kinda square that off.
So in order to get his volume calculations, he's pulling this back here and going, and square, and just making that square is what he was saying? Correct?
Yes.
So what we're looking at is existing right now?
Existing, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Interesting, in the old minutes, it says, located more than a hundred feet from the water.
Yeah, and everything was the same, I've already, same, I've gone through it, that was Dennis's motion to, um, and that was one of the things that we had to do, I was gonna have to have you address, because he says the building's behind a hundred, but, in the whole thing, he, the minutes talk about using the existing foundation.
So we're only using part of the existing foundation?
No, he's using all the existing foundation, except for he's just adding a small piece outside the hundred.
Okay, he's expanding, he's expanding, he's not...
Just, he's squaring this off right here.
Right.
And that's outside the hundred. Right, but all this is, correct, all the other stuff is fine and good to go.
Right.
Um, let me, I'll pull some pictures for you and...
The only thing really stays is, you gotta keep the porch on...
Yes.
Stay within, within a hundred.
Yeah, exactly. The porch is what really kinda hangs over everything.
Right. Is that on footings?
Um, yes, it's, yes, footing's there now. We are on the steepest part of the hill on the, this part of the lake.
Septic is already approved for right here, obviously it's not in the ground, but it's just an approved outside the shoreline zone, um, it's the only way for them to put it on the lot, the new septic.
It goes under the driveway?
Yeah, it's gonna be chambers, under the driveway, um, well beyond the hundred. I did have, um, Line Pro surveying put, um, they, the original plan didn't have, um, measurements on the deck from the water, so, um, that was the only, my major concern is I wanted to make sure that I had all the measurements on there. Where's your footing, Chris?
Yeah, thanks. There's another one.
No, it's the same one.
Wow, that's a good shot right there. Their existing, their existing lot coverage, twenty-three percent.
Do we gain anything by scoring that off and moving it back?
He's actually removing, I believe he was removing some, um, where is this thing? So, this is no longer, he's coming, to get his volume calculations, he had to come, he's, he can't build it in here, so it's actually, he's coming, that part of the building is gonna be behind the hundred, and then it's gonna be here.
Mm-hmm.
So, this one, this goes away.
So there's just a piece little here, just these in.
Yeah, yeah, and the decks.
Deck, part of the deck.
And the deck, yeah. And, he, you know, this is, um, we had talked at some point, I don't know if Sean has thought more about it, but revegetating part of this pavement.
Eventually, some of that pavement will disappear, yes.
That's just a very large section, so he's gonna, he's gonna at some point be under his vegetated thing, and, um...
Well, it'd be nice to get that...
It's something if you guys wanna talk to him about...
Get that right into the...
Well, if that's something you guys wanna talk to him about, then...
Figure out a plan for your lower driveway that reduces your lot coverage, uh, below the twenty percent.
Right.
You know, we wouldn't have to get rid of it to obtain that either.
Yeah.
Even if they just kinda narrowed up what's there. I mean, you know, it would be up to you how you change it.
Yeah, I just, it needs to be more kid and elderly friendly down there, it's, it's all at a big slope and it's all hopped up, so it's, something has to be done at this.
Yeah.
At some point.
In the original thing, they had talked about having him use York County Soil for revegetation plan.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, I would, yeah, I would stick with that, keep that in there, you know?
Is this stained too, or is this, was this...
Yeah, it is for now, I don't know what I'm doing with it, to be honest with you.
What was the, uh, purpose of the...
I have absolutely no idea.
Like a propane tank or something, or what?
No, it's just a pad there, the propane tank is over by the garage.
Right, why would it be way over there anyway?
I don't know.
So that could go, you could get rid of that, would help your twenty percent.
Well, the previous owner's like concrete, is all I can say, is...
Yeah, yeah.
Got a lot of concrete on that property.
And that would help.
Yeah. I mean, it's not as close to the lake as the pavement, but it's still, still right there, it's like...
Should get him down to twenty anyway.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we can get him down to twenty with, with the pavement alone. And that's one that he wants to do anyway, just gotta figure what he wants to...
Yeah.
What he wants to do with it. What he wants to do with it.
Yes, the pavement could be helping prevent erosion right now too.
It is, but I've been talking with, uh, with the water shit, people, what are they called?
Back in Wakefield, the Water City of Atlanta?
You did talk, last, when I spoke to you a while ago, you did talk to the York County Soil and Road and...
That's what the name of them, I can't...
Yeah, it was, um, York County Soil and Water for, uh, York County Soil and Water.
We have a plan to make drainage coming down, down that hill at, at some point, but, uh...
This is a very steep going down.
Right, I can tell from some of the pictures.
I'm not following the volume calculation, the thirty percent.
Where are we at?
The proposed is actually smaller than the existing, so it's...
Because some of it's going backwards.
Oh, beyond?
Yeah.
That's the difference?
I think so. Give me a second, John.
Just a hundred fifty-seven half feet, you know? Yeah, that's what it's saying. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah.
Actually, John, he forgot, uh, you, you caught that, he forgot the, um, volume for the basement, which is the first, same as the, the first, so it ends up totaling, uh, four thousand twenty-nine seventy-five. He's allotted with the expansion forty-one hundred and forty-six, so he's still under... Oh, no, that's, I didn't catch that. Thank you. So he's still under by, uh, a hundred and twenty cubic feet. Correct?
So I just fix that form so...
Yeah, I got it, I just, I jotted it on mine already. The, uh, the previous one, he didn't even have any, it was, he was just giving you, he didn't have any plans or anything, just gave you the existing one.
So, Jason, you did say you got the measurements to the pond from?
Yep. It's seventy-seven point two to the closest point, right here.
But I thought that point was coming back.
No, the decks are staying, the, the foundations, he's talking, that, no, so, what he's doing is he's squaring this off, all this is a stain, same.
Oh, I thought I heard that part of the deck was going...
Are you saying, what?
No, the decks are all staying.
Not really moving back then.
Yeah.
No, all the construction's going on behind the hundred, everything that's in the ground right now is staying in the ground, is the proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
Which was the same thing, the original, the motion that was made in the, the last planning board didn't even come close to what the actual project was.
No, that's, yeah, true.
Because it was said that it was the foundation behind a hundred feet, and nothing's changed, I have the whole, like, I gave you guys the original application and the descriptions, and even if you read the minutes, it talks about using the existing foundation, but then the motion was made by the previous planning board to approve behind the hut, whatever it was, the, you know. It says, um, you know, so-and-so moved to approve an application of best practical location submitted by Sean Longley to demo and rebuild a home on existing foundation outside of the hundred mark, with the condition the property under contact York County Soil and Water for revegetation, and it was seconded and passed five to nothing. But like I said, the application, everything, drawings were all the same, uh, they're, they're behind, so if you flip through after the minutes, you'll actually, that's his, the old application.
So you, you're gonna demo the whole house?
Right.
You're gonna demo the deck?
Yes.
Well, it seems like an opportunity to move it back from the lake with, in terms of the footprint of the deck somehow.
I don't think you want me digging in that hill as much as possible.
Yeah, I think the picture man, it seemed like that was a pretty, pretty steep hill there. Maybe we should go look at it.
Good, yeah, we could. Where's the other side, the other side? Those are garden. They're not near each other.
It's only one corner right there, it's kind of wonky on that deck. So that's behind the house, street side of the house?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And you're gonna dig into that anyway for the foundation, right?
Just for footing.
Just for, um...
The patio side, just that?
Just for this right here.
Yeah, and that was in front of the house.
Everything was, the, the plan is to, for him, was to still use all this right here.
Right, but the, in terms of the deck, you know, if we focus on the deck for a second, the existing footings that are under the deck...
I can't come back anymore because I got a concrete pad all the way underneath that.
Oh, underneath it?
Yeah.
On both sides of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, wrapped around the house. That's all concrete right there.
Really? Sorry about the flask flipping, I'm trying to get to some. There in the other one, just give me one second.
I'm getting a good idea for it.
You had a good picture of it somewhere else there? Right there.
Yeah. Well, it'd be going back, but the concrete's gonna be...
And the septic really doesn't, the design, it's being receptive replacements, really would have, I mean, would have to be redesigned if you're trying to move them backwards, because he's got a tank and a field that needs to go there.
Well, I was just looking at maybe potentially shrinking the deck somehow to reduce that seventy-four number, because that's the close corner, and it wouldn't have anything to do with the foundation of the house, I was just looking at that.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was all that concrete underneath it.
You're not really gaining much by doing that, I don't, you can...
Right.
Can I, probably use... Reuse those footings.
So, the patio will be, what's now the patio, you're gonna square off, uh, but that will then be behind the hundred-foot line?
I think there's like two feet in front of it.
Right on that way left, there it is.
I think it's coming...
Actually, no, I'm on this side, right where you are now, it'll be about two feet in front of the, right there.
And then it goes, and then it goes to the hundred.
And that'll be behind there.
Yeah. It was, the only way to make his volume calculations to work was to, um, was to push it back.
We can't get that little slithering behind the hundred?
Yeah, why, why couldn't you get that, that would only help more.
I probably can, I don't know.
Right, because it's a patio now, right?
Yeah.
Well, the whole left hand side, every tenement wall is all concrete, ten-inch concrete wall.
Yeah.
And to be honest with you, I already had this all in action at the, get that on progress end and it's already being advocated.
That was just, that's what's up there, just he gave me a...
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just trying to... Well, it seems like the board would like to see some part of the thing moved back, whether it's this part of the patio or something to do with the, the deck or something that doesn't affect the, uh, existing foundation, but can still, still pull you back from the lake.
What's the size of the deck right now, Sean?
One, yeah, twelve foot wide, twelve foot by forty-four, and then another twelve by thirty-six.
Would you, would you be willing to go to a ten-foot wide deck?
I can't account in that area to be able to get around the house. And I'm right on this, the hill, I can't come back off that, I can't go forward anymore if I wanted to, which I know that's not what you're asking, but I pull back as much as I possibly can, because of the existing garage.
Well, we're not talking about moving the whole structure, just...
No, what I'm saying is...
Just the deck and try to shrink the deck.
If you shrunk your deck from a twelve-foot deck, twelve-foot wide deck to a ten, you'd be on your, your concrete right around here. And then the board's getting a little bit, you're giving a little, little bit.
I've given a lot already. Compared to the original plan.
Right, I'm just confused about the original, because it, the, it says it's located more than a hundred from the water, that's just confuses me.
Yeah, it wasn't right.
Well, maybe we should do a sidewalk, I don't know, I don't know.
I have one of the biggest lots on the lake, especially in that whole stretch of that road, and I am, that's my only vulnerable area where I'm at.
I mean, there's, there's plenty of pulling up a bunch of asphalt.
Right, yeah, I mean, we could, we could, you know, focus in that direction too.
I think that's where I would go with this one, it's really not changing much with the structure, but if you focus on getting to the twenty percent with the asphalt, I think it, that's something that he already wants to do.
And get rid of that concrete bed.
Behind the hundred. He's, the, we're moving that asphalt, we'll get him under the twenty percent, or some of that asphalt, or however, what do you, what will work on something, if he...
Right, just so you can still turn around at the lower camp, but maybe it wouldn't have to be so wide on the whole lower section, I, I don't know, it's kind of hard to, to tell.
Turn around down there now, you're doing a twelve-point turn.
You can't turn around now anyway.
Can, but it's, if there's two vehicles down there, you can't.
Yeah.
Do you have pictures of that lower area?
Huh? No, I don't, because it really didn't pertain to this at the time. And these are, these are actually photos from the last planning board, they're not mine, I scanned them onto this disc, that's all.
Why don't we go look at it? We get an idea of what is doable in terms of getting to twenty percent.
Yeah, because like, sometimes these sort of asphalt driveways, it's like, it is retaining stuff by having the pavement there, has to be well done to remove it and not cause erosion. We could probably do, uh, I think we could get, get it in at five-thirty, or is that gonna be too tight? I mean, the first sidewalk, the other sidewalk's not gonna take very long.
It won't, that's barely gonna take any time.
Right.
The one on one oh nine didn't take any time.
What do, I mean, what are we even looking at? We just need to look at it.
Right. But then it'd be... Back here.
Right, how far?
Was short.
Pretty far up, was short.
Almost at the end, isn't it?
Yeah, pretty close to the end. The highest spot on the road.
Well, we could do it on a different day to work.
Right.
Yeah. Could be on that day.
What do you want to do is the day before?
We could do it, um, next Thursday, at around planning board time.
And?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me make sure.
Get him in on the seventeenth. Right, then he could be at the meeting on the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Talking two weeks from now?
Uh, a sidewalk for the tenth, which would be...
Week from today?
Week from today.
And then finish it up at the next meeting on the seventeenth.
Do any sooner than that, because I'll be almost six weeks before this is...
You can't do anything until the next planning board meeting, anyway, Sean.
We can't be on the seventeenth either.
Yeah, I can't be on the seventeenth, no.
As long as somebody's there for the sidewalk, we can get back to it whenever it's going to be for them. to be for them.
So you, what, you're thinking starting around tearing it down or?
Yeah.
In September?
I'm tearing it down the minute you guys give me a permit. I've already pulled all the windows and doors out of it, it's ready to go. And I got all, everybody all lined up, pulling off jobs that they're all busy on and everybody doing me a favor right at this point. Because I've been jerked around on this whole thing, not with you guys, but with builders and you name it. That's why the whole design's been such a long dragged out thing.
Right.
And we was, like I said, I already approved for this, so it's, kind of thought it was an easy go. The house is already being fabricated as we speak and there ain't much turning back. I've already, last time I met with Jason, I made major, major address adjustments. The last time we had to, I had to spend another thirty-five hundred dollars and have the whole house redesigned.
He takes off a thousand square feet of that asphalt. It brings him to twenty percent.
Right, which is, we're supposed to be focused on the, the building, the hundred feet.
I understand that.
And so it's kind of hard to know, you know, I don't know. I think we should do the sidewalk, I guess. We could get another planning board member in on it too to help us. I don't know, what do you think, John?
We would, yeah, we would want to have another planning board guy there for sure.
Or, I mean, if you, you know, you know, like, we could probably get through it tonight if you helped us.
I only brought him back in here because I thought this was cut and dry. Um, and it was, he had missed his timeframe. So I figured, they, they approved this in one meeting, I figured you guys would look at that they approved it and then just kind of look at it and even, I even gave you more information than what the last board had. Um, so I was thinking that this was a one meeting, one and done, um, situation.
Understandable, yeah.
And I, so that's all the only reason, you know, and I, I asked Sean to come in for this because I didn't want anybody to get in any trouble because he, the timeframe had lapsed.
Right.
And so that, before I could approve his permit, that's why I was like, um, hold on a second.
It's weird, you know, the, the motion says outside the hundred. I know, but it's, that's, I mean, the, you know, according to this, you're, you were approved to rebuild behind the hundred, according to the, to, to this record.
Build the whole existing foundation.
Which is obviously incorrect, but that's what the record shows.
Yeah, the, the motion was incorrect. The application is the same.
If it's the existing foundation, part of it, some of it is within the hundred, but they're saying on the last motion that they, at the last meeting two years ago, saying outside the hundred foot mark. So they were wrong when they stated that in their motion because part of the foundation's staying in the hundred. Not all of the lot, but.
But there again, I'm leaving all the existing foundation that's there.
It's gonna be two.
But that, part of that is within the hundred. But, so their motion is screwing kind of things up here.
But they're also saying using the allowable thirty percent expansion. You don't use thirty percent expansion behind the hundred. It's, you don't need it. That's why you got some of these houses being built that are larger than what was previous, way larger than what was previously there. So he did state that they were allowing the thirty percent on the existing foundation.
Right, but it doesn't say anything about the deck or, it just says outside the hundred foot mark. So it, then we're just talking about the house. So it doesn't say anything about the deck at all on there. And then there's, and that's why I like to get that number that says seventy-four feet from the high watermark. There's no number on there. The number is a hundred. So.
Well, that's why I had him put that number on.
Yeah, it's on there. It's, I mean, closest point is.
No, I mean, on, in the, uh, motion.
Oh, yeah.
I always put the, it's seventy-four feet from the high watermark. You put the number eight in the motion so that, because this, this motion tells us that it's behind the hundred.
Well, good thing, that's an old motion, we can make a newer.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think the motion needs to be, the, it needs to be corrected, you know, a hundred percent. And that's why.
Well, that's why we kind of have to start over basically. It lapsed, the motion was incorrect, except we're, we're back at phase one. Unfortunately, I mean, so, I don't know if we can't come to an agreement on how we can either push the thing back or tonight or reduce the twenty percent down until over twenty percent tonight. And we should probably take a look at it, I guess.
Would you be surprised if it was, we dealt with just the twenty percent right now and, and, and left?
No closer than seventy-seven or whatever and?
Yeah, no closer than the seventy-seven point two and then removed a thousand square feet of the asphalt.
Reducing to twenty percent, the lot coverage?
Say that again to me?
So, we're, I'm trying to get them to leave.
Just trying to figure out how much pavement you have to.
So right now, your lot coverage is, is twenty-three percent. So in order to, the board will work with this if you're willing to, in the motion say, well, you'll remove a thousand square feet of that asphalt and then you'll be fine to continue on what should, what's going on.
Yeah, I just don't know what that measurement is, but yeah, I mean, I'm planning on taking out a piece of that rooftop down bottom.
Well, whatever it is, we're just gonna get your lot coverage down to twenty percent.
Yeah, throw the concrete pad in there.
Yeah, if you did, if it had to be that concrete pad or if it had to be the asphalt, but we're trying to.
Or combine.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get this pushed through for you.
I got you. How much was the concrete?
So, right now you're at, the concrete was, give me a second, I just did a bunch of math a second ago.
Uh-oh.
Um.
And you kept your shoes on? Broke his chair, so two chairs.
Uh, if you bring it down to fifty-five, I think it was fifty-five hundred. Right now you're at sixty-four. I'll do it again.
Yeah.
So right now you have sixty-four hundred square feet of driveway, roads, beaches, walkways and all this other stuff. So, if you bring it down to, I think I had it at fifty-five hundred instead of sixty-four, it was even nine hundred. So it's. It's twenty point eight. So if you went to fifty-four, you'd be at under twenty. So it'd be, if you went to a thousand square feet of, if you removed a thousand square feet of permeable surface, you would be below your twenty percent.
So can you tell how much that concrete pad would be in that walkway?
I don't have the measurements on that. Um, but you're probably getting close to it. And then you're gonna shave some of that pavement anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So with the pavement, I just want to work with them people and come up with a.
If, if they just make a motion to remove a thousand square feet of permeable surface to get below the twenty percent, we can, you guys work with that one. Yeah, Gavin?
It's sounding pretty good. I'm just, just looking at the numbers.
So I'll tell you exactly what fifty-four hundred would, would total out to.
Well, because the total non-vegetated is ten thousand nine hundred and four.
Well, that's your structures and garages.
That's everything. So that's our twenty-three percent.
But I'm working with the driveway and the patio.
Right.
I'm done.
That, you need to come down thirteen hundred, not a thousand.
Oh, is it there?
That's what I was.
Oh, no, well, I'm. Sixty-four.
So the total is ten, you're at ninety-five, or you're at ten-nine, you're at, the total is ten point nine. Uh, twenty percent is nine-five. You do that math to get, subtract ninety-five from the ten thousand, you get thirteen hundred. And so, let's see if that works. That might not work. Hang on. Sixty-four minus thirteen. Oh, yeah, so, well, wait a minute, no, it's about.
Yeah, fifty-four hundred puts me at twenty percent. If I go to the pavement, the asphalt, if I do driveway, roads, beaches and walkways, and that's, shows right now sixty-four hundred, if I do fifty-four hundred, it brings me to twenty percent. It's like twenty point one. Oh, even less than that. Nine. Oh, fuck.
Do you think that concrete pad is considered a driveway, road, beach, walkway other?
It's on the plan. Joe doesn't mess around with stuff like that.
No, I mean, it's not a.
Oh, it would just be.
On shed patio.
It could be an accessory structure shed. I'm just trying to do the, I don't even care if it's, um, accessory structures, garage sheds or patios, or if it's driveways, roads or beaches, as long as you get the permeable surface down.
Right, right.
Yeah, and a thousand will get you to.
A thousand gets you to twenty.
Twenty-six.
Yeah. So if you, if you just make it in the motion to remove a thousand square feet of permeable surface to, to bring it to twenty percent.
Do you agree to that, Sean?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm doing it anyhow, so. Out of my plan anyways.
That, what, that gets us to twenty point six?
Twenty point six.
Can we get to nineteen point nine here? Can we just go?
If, so fifty, what was it, fifty-four or was it?
Let's go fifty-two hundred instead of fifty-four.
That's like eighteen percent, I think.
Oh, I'd be happy with that. Nice number.
Hang on, let me tell you what fifty-two hundred is.
Getting pretty good at my twenty percent. You should be working on this, Chris, right now instead of John.
It's twenty point two.
He's the Einstein. Oh, it's still above. So let's go down to five thousand. Driveway, roads, beach.
Wait, fifty-two is still above, John? You sure?
Twenty point two. Five thousand.
Yeah, I think that'll do it, five thousand.
Should.
Because like he was saying, it's a fairly big a lot.
Doesn't any of my extra land cover for anything?
No.
Nothing.
This incorporates every, this is already your land. So your lot is forty-seven hundred square, uh, forty-seven thousand square feet. So what they're doing right now is your primary structure, they're adding up your, your structures, your patios, your, um, driveways and that, that's your, your lot coverage. And you're, in our ordinance, if you were to build a lot today, you're not allowed anything more than twenty percent lot coverage. So what they're trying to do is just bring it back to twenty percent. And we're trying to leave it where your structure's nineteen.
No, and I, and I see what you're saying, but I just, and I'm just puzzled because I got a whole nother. Part of an acre of land there that's useless to me and, and like we keep saying, that my lot is way bigger than ninety percent of people.
Right, but they're, they're dealing, Sean, they're dealing with the lot coverage.
Than I do.
Right, but it's, it's percentage of the lot. So it doesn't matter if your lot is a hundred acres, it's the percentage of that total.
I could go pull out tape and measure on three houses over there right now and guarantee you they got a lot more lot coverage than I do.
Eight point eight.
Well, that, this is a big problem. That's why we try to address it is because impervious surface on these small lake lots is, is an issue with runoff and.
So what are you at, John, right now? Fifty-two?
Five thousand takes it to nineteen point eight.
Yeah.
So that means you'd have to find fourteen hundred square feet.
But I think that's totally doable because he's got that concrete pad thing too.
Yeah, take that off.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that propane tank in that pad counts for anything, but I've already gotten rid of that.
It might if it was included in these.
This is an old thing, so if you already got rid of something like that, oh, yeah, that might have, I don't know.
It's hard to know.
We'll figure, we can, we'll, it's something, Sean, I think you can really work with that number. Um, I think it's your best option right now.
I've said I'm planning on doing most of that regardless, so.
And I understand, and we do, I understand you have a, a large lot there, um, but previous owner also did put a lot of stuff on it.
Yeah, right. He inherited it, so to speak.
All right, if you, if you're good with that, Sean, I'll make a motion. So the, the total lot coverage then that I'll put in the motion needs to be ninety-five oh four.
No greater than.
No greater than. And no closer than, what is it? Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven point two.
Seventy-seven point two. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the application for greatest practical extent for Sean Longley at one three four two West Shore Drive, map one twenty-one, lot zero twenty-two. Uh, with the stipulation, the structure is no closer than seventy-seven point two feet from the high watermark and that the existing lot coverage is reduced to nine thousand five hundred and four square feet.
And the existing foundation is used.
And the existing foundation is used, yes.
Yeah. I'll second that.
I'm on here. I'll oppose.
So we'll cancel the sidewalk for.
Wouldn't want to walk down that hill anyhow. Got to come back up after.
John, what was that, ninety-five what?
Need a hell of a.
Ninety-five oh four.
I need to have Chris sign this. I'll talk to you tomorrow, Sean.
Okay.
You're all set.
All right, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, just lost my phone. This one here, that's it for new business. We just, still got the.
What was that?
Yeah.
I was just saying if you needed any.
Any products, projects, just.
Um, I have, um, something in the pipeline. I just can't tell you if it's coming in or not. I asked them to get me the stuff, um, well in advance so that it can be reviewed by the planner. This is definitely, um, well, Kelly Orchards is looking to come back in for their, because they've, their times lapse now. They're actually shrinking the solar. Yeah, they're shrinking their solar. I've given them everything, the amendments to the ordinance for solar to look at. She feels that she's met everything. Um, but they're shrinking the size of it. Same buffers, everything like that, less impact on things, but I asked them to give it to me in advance so I can get it to the planner because they'll be, they were involved in that last one. And, um, and that you, you guys can look at it too.
So that's the only change? It's getting smaller?
Yeah.
Anything else coming or we've got our?
Um, nothing until the lot line adjustment within a whole nine yards situation gets passed through. I, it's, it's just hearsay it right now, you know, um, so.
We've got the contractor yard coming back next time.
That, but.
Yeah. You can get our board to show up.
Looking, yeah. So that's about it? That's all the projects on there?
Uh, sidewalks, you have two sidewalks?
No.
Not one sidewalk, one sidewalk, thank you. Um, and I do appreciate you guys getting that through for me because it was a crappy situation that I was kind of stuck in. Um, but the.
That's all right, you take your thought.
Uh, so we have a sidewalk. We scheduled the public hearing and I'm gonna get the butter lists out too.
Yeah.
But yeah, nothing else right now.
Cool.
Um, you know, if you guys want to start pondering on if there's, if there's gonna be any changes, changes this year or not. You know, if you guys wanna start pondering on if there's gonna be any changes this year or not.
There's that one that we gotta take out of dealing with the newspaper again and-
Oh, that's just, yeah. And then I can talk to other somebody else and see if that's just housekeeping and just changing, just-
Without making it a big ordeal?
Yeah, I just have to ask that question.
Yeah, we should probably have a, if we had some time in a meeting, go through what we think. Changes. Yeah, well, there's that one that we need to change, we should have changed.
I'd be happy with no changes. That way we don't have to go to meetings.
Oh, that's how we handle this one, so.
Well, you know, at the end of the day, the they're gonna get going on that comprehensive plan, right?
I have no clue, that's really-
Because if they do that-
Was there some discussion about that or?
No. There has not been, I thought there was.
There was a couple years, a year ago and then it-
I thought there was some, some of the newly elected committed to driving that forward.
Well, maybe we need to, as a board go to the selectmen's meeting and present it to them or something, get the ball rolling. They're the ones who actually need to establish the committee.
Absolutely. That could drive something.
But my understanding, that can take up, that can take years, because the comprehensive plans, they have to go in front of the state too and then they have to, they have to be approved by the state and all this other stuff. But I do know some of these consulting companies do help out with that, like some of main planning, saying you wouldn't want to start.
Oh, yeah.
And they're more than willing to, you, I had an email beginning of the year, asking, you know, for all towns, let me know, let us know if they need hand with the comprehensive plan, but-
See, we were gonna start that, but then it was taken out of our hands.
Yeah, it's, well, yeah.
Yeah, it's their role.
It is, it's the selectmen's role.
Right.
But they've been putting it off for decades.
Yeah. Required every ten years.
We need to do it, so just nudge them again, I guess, I don't know.
It would help if they helped.
Yeah. Cool.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
All favor? All opposed?
All right, thank you.